Stand.
You just stand, okay. I think we could all stand for that. Betty, she's sick.
Oh, is she?
She said she just barely made it through work. And she's like, it's the stomach. I'm like, nope, don't bring that here.
No, thank you.
I said Jim's not gonna want it, Sam's not gonna want to sit next to it. And she's like, really? I'm like, nope, none of us do. I say, thanks, Malia. No, 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 stomach. And Jim Kennel is, has a prior engagement, so he will not be here either. I know, one more person in life, we're out of here.
Got two Monday nighters tonight, yeah.
Doubleheader.
Anabelle.
Devil?
One's at seven and one's at 10.
You might as well put the bag on.
I was like, you might as well.
Keep open, you know.
I haven't once his name.
Well, they cut the holes out of the eyes that lead to the Brown Stadium yesterday. They were close, they were close, but not so close. Denver's playing. I actually had it pulled up earlier.
Google it.
I'll be talking baseball till.
Oh, my God, 18, 18.
Everything Jackson asked me, did they win again?
I know, it's amazing. It's like, it's cool, it's so cool.
The Saints are playing Vikings at 7:10, and the Chargers are playing the Broncos at 10:20.
Oh, and now his mom too.
Well, me too. I let him pick, I said, I figured he'd wanna do a fireman. He said, no, I wanna do a baseball player.
Oh, I scare her baseball player, that's so cute.
Of course, every time you watch the Indians have a good season, you gotta watch Major League. Sorry, I don't, Jovu. It's very bad to drink Jovu. I think so. Oh, yeah, the Saints are playing the Vikings, and the Chargers are playing the Broncos.
The name on this two percent.
Yeah.
It's been different.
Yeah, I didn't do that. I'm gonna have to come to your house and watch it tonight.
A couple of different, a couple of different, a couple of different people, I'm wondering, but I forget who exactly they were, like three people.
All right, 7 o'clock, we'll get started. Please stand for prayer or pledge. Dear Heavenly Father, we bow before you tonight, and we ask that you watch over us as we conduct the business of the village. We ask a special prayer for our sickened or shut-in, and that you lay your healing hand on them. In your name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, call the roll.
Flowers.
Here.
Kennel.
Wright.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Householder.
Harp.
Here.
Okay, counsel, motion would be in order to excuse Mayor Pinkerton tonight due to sickness. Counselwoman Householder due to sickness, and Councilman Kennel due to personal reasons.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Harp, seconded by Flowers. Questions or comments? Clerk, call the roll.
Flowers.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Harp.
Aye.
Reading and disposition of the minutes of the previous meeting. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mayor make motion, pardon me. I call you mayor, that's fine.
That's funny, yes.
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes as presented from the previous meeting.
Second. Motion by Harp, seconded by Flowers. Questions or comments? Clerk, call the roll.
Flowers.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Harp.
Aye.
Citizens' comments. Ms. Weingart, please state your name and your address for the court.
Jan Weingart, 196 East Ohio. I have a few things I wanna update on. Turner and May Building and Royal Properties. Has anything been done, anything advanced from four years ago?
If I may, Mr. President. The Turner and May Building, from what Trista told us, Trista Tolson told us, a couple months ago, was the owners were gonna demolish the property either this month or next. So, I guess it's really waiting game to see whether or not they're gonna do that. Regarding the Royal China Property, there was an emergence meeting that was held a week or so ago. One of the things that we looked into, and I believe Counselwoman Phillips was in attendance, so was Councilman Kennel. What the merchants are looking to do is to work with the GADC, which is kind of like a community improvement corporation, and the consensus was to look into the possibility of hiring a consultant to walk the village and the community through the process of expediting cleanup on that. Councilman Kennel indicated at the time that there may be an interested party to purchase the property, perhaps by years end. But I think the recommendation of hiring a consultant as a community effort, not just with village funds, but also GADC money, perhaps merchants as well, I think that's a good, good starting point to walk us through the copious amounts bureaucracy it's gonna take to move that project forward. I think the real stumbling block is ownership of the property. I mean, the Brownfield grant that's available through the state, which is through federal super fund monies, that's going to be available, it's continually available, but it's the, it's the ownership of the property that's kinda stunning the process. So, that's kinda where we're at.
The audit, 2014-15, I haven't seen it published. It's gotta be bad.
We could look into it.
We haven't, we haven't seen it.
I haven't seen it getting a copy yet.
I haven't.
We'll contact the auditors and ask, and ask them where the copy is, we haven't received it yet. Well, we did get the preliminary, but we didn't get the formal copy, to my knowledge. Is that through Julian Bird still?
Yes, yes. We have, yeah.
All right. I'll give them a call tomorrow.
Community document shred day, are we gonna do that?
We are, to my knowledge, Jan, we are still working on that, and the department heads are trying to get all their stuff together. So, once we have the department heads' documents, then yes, we can schedule that. But that's part of the mayor's retention committee, and to my knowledge, I don't know the last time they met.
Yeah, they have to have a meeting first.
They gotta have a meeting, so.
They have a meeting.
So, the holdup is the retention committee?
Yes.
Correct. I don't think it's been, according to Ohiowise Code, it's supposed to be done every six months, but I don't think it's been done for about three years.
So, I'll pass that on to the mayor, so that...
How about an update on the courthouse, the new courthouse? What do we know? Nothing.
Just what was published in the paper. I mean, they haven't fed us any information.
Six months ago.
Nothing?
Yeah, no.
They're not feeding us anything.
So, we don't know about WR TA having their bus house there? Nothing?
No.
Okay. That's all I have.
All right, any other citizens? All right, reading and referring of communications and/or petitions.
I'm clerk.
Yeah. You guys got it all.
Just briefly, I received an email from Beth Shehan. She's from Cincinnati, I don't know what RR dot com is, doesn't say what it's from, but anyway, she forwarded a ordinance template regarding, she asked if council would consider passing a tethering ordinance in Sebring, and I printed off a copy of that for council at One in Your Box Tonight. Essentially, it's, seems to be some sort of cruelty of animals, neglect of animals, tethering of animals, so forth. So, it's an animal, animal cruelty ordinance template. So, I put that in the council's box papers.
All righty, let's put that into legislative. Yep. So, that was...
Maybe Mr. Kennel.
I think the tethering refers to state kinda leaving an animal on a short leash and leaving them out there.
Okay. Anything else solicitors not here tonight? All right, report of council committee and council representatives. Finance is myself, finance has not met since our last, last council meeting, but we are scheduled tomorrow to meet at 3 o'clock here in council chambers. Two items on the agenda, one being the trash aggregation, and two being reviewing the possibility of offering the manager a pay raise.
We're gonna discuss that water bill.
Oh, we're gonna discuss that water bill. Last, at last council meeting, there was an excessive water bill that was racked up at a, at a burned out structure, so we're going to talk about putting a resolution on the next agenda to waive that, basically decertify that, and then abolish that off the books. Appears there was some, some issues there, not related to the customer, so I don't really care who did it or what did it, but we'll take care of it. Mr. Kennel was squawking about it, so we'll take a look at that tomorrow, and have the clerk prepare some legislation.
Do we have the votes to do that tonight?
What's that?
Do we have the votes to do that tonight?
Well, could we just do that by motion? I mean, you wanna do it by...
I have to have a resolution.
Yeah, well, 'cause we're gonna have to decertify it, so yeah, we will have to have a resolution.
Well, I thought about that too, Jim.
Yeah, that's right. We, yeah, because we're gonna decertify it first, and then we'll just have to clear it off the books, so.
Yeah, I mean, last week, last council meeting, procedurally, we had to certify it as procedures to do it.
Yes, it was in there.
I mean, even though it wasn't their fault, but it had to be done.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think all of council is in agreement with that, that, that was just a...
Not their mistake.
Not their mistake, so we'll take care of it at our next council meeting.
Yeah, if I may, there's a memo to that effect, gives you the information regarding the particular case, including account history and the sections of the water rules that apply.
Okay.
Requires administratively, you can't, I don't have the authority, or nobody in the staff has the authority to waive a metered water bill on council, and that's by Section 38 of Water Rules, and then Section 116 says council has exclusive authority to do that.
Yes.
The detail of that information on that particular issue should be in the box.
I think the waiving, we could do by simple motion. It's the decertification, we're gonna have to do by, by resolution, because the clerk has to file that with the, with the auditors.
Since we certified.
Yeah, since we already certified it, so, yeah, the next meeting, we'll be prepared to, to take action on that, I believe. All of council is in agreement with that. So, I guess at this point, since we haven't had a finance meeting, we will have one tomorrow, I'd make a motion that we pay bills in the amount of $97,607.03 when funds become available dated 8/26 to 9/8.
So, I'll make that motion, pay bill.
Motion by Harp, seconded by Phillips. Questions or comments? Most of this is standard. There was some, some flow pacing valve at the water treatment plant was $3,984, and a meter, ortho and pH meter, for $2,465. Dehumidifier out at the water treatment plant also, $4,831.28. Central Allied for hot mix and hot and cold mixed blanket, $3,670.47. Finley Equipment, this was for the new Jaws of Life, $12,994.38. Ohio Edison, $11,318.87. And the pipe for the 14th Street Water Project, $2,976.73. So, if there are no other questions or comments, clerk, call the roll.
Flowers.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Harp.
Okay, moving down the line, legislative, Mr. Kennel, anybody else in that committee here tonight?
Didn't have any.
No, no meeting? Okay. Capital improvements. Ms. Householder, which isn't here, anybody in that committee that, we had any meetings? I don't believe so. Annexation and business and land development, Counselwoman Phillips?
We have not had a meeting. As the manager said, I did attend the, the Merch Association, it's with Reimagined Sebring, they had a meeting a couple weeks ago, and I'm actually gonna be attending their meetings for their steering committee now, so I'll be going to those regularly, just so council is aware. Tom Pukas from the Alliance Area Development Foundation was very helpful when he was in, like the manager said, so we're gonna, he gave us a lot of good ideas, and I'm kinda waiting for the next meeting to see how they wanna proceed, so I'll let you guys know when we have more information, so.
All righty, service maintenance on stormwater, Councilman Flowers.
No meeting, however, we will have a meeting probably next week sometime, I'm gonna try, possibly Monday or early Tuesday for Mr. Wright, so if that's okay?
Yeah.
If it's early enough?
Should be, should be good, yeah. Safety, Councilman Harp.
No meeting.
Parks and Recreation.
We have not met since last meeting, but Angel did send an update, the full give close on August 18th due to the birds going back to school. Everything is ready to be winterized by the service department, so they're gonna be helping her out with that. She will keep two grounds employees working throughout the season, the rest of the seasonal employees are done for the year. She did say David Yogi, who was the boiler operator at the center, he has prepared the boiler for the cold season, and the inspection went well for that in July when they had that done, so that should be fine. And then their next meeting is actually Thursday at 7 o'clock at the community center, so.
Planning and zoning, has not met since our last meeting. Civil Service, Councilman Flowers.
Yeah, Civil Service hasn't had a meeting, however, we did give patrolmen and dispatch test on Saturday, 9 o'clock, eight applied for the police test, seven showed up to take the exam, and five passed with a 70 or more. So, we do have five that are potentially gonna be, that are available on the list. Dispatch, five applied, five took the exam, and all passed with the 70 plus, so we have five potential dispatchers on the list if we need them, which is a good thing. Also, two, while we're on civil service, the mayor has asked that, with advice and consent of council, that we appoint, he wanted to appoint Tom Striefler to fill the unexpired term ending 12/31/2018 on the Civil Service Commission.
Any motion on that?
Yep.
Motion to appoint Tom Striefler to fill the vacancy on Civil Service Commission?
Second. Motion by Harp, seconded by Flowers. Questions or comments? Clerk, call the roll.
Flowers.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Harp.
Aye.
All righty, that's it for civil service?
Yeah, they're going, they are gonna have a couple, they're gonna have a meeting here soon, they need to revamp their civil service rules, there's some updates that need to be done, so they are planning a, a meeting.
Veterans Memorial Maintenance Committee is myself, and we have not met. Retention Committee is the mayor, and they have not met. So, we're moving right along to the manager's report.
Mr. President, I attended a ODOT pre-construction meeting in Akron, this was for the 12th Street paving project. The revised schedule for construction, it will start on October 4th, project will conclude on October 27th. Our portion is subsurface drainage work in the paving of 12th Street from the northern to the southern village limits. ODOT conjunction with Mahone County is also paving 12th Street north of our city limits to Courtney Road, and south our limits to State Route 62. Minimum of two feet of all driveway aprons are a part of this project, and all road trimmings will go with the service department for future use. So, looks like we're gonna start a little soon. Speaking of paving, my last information from Tom, Tim Yova, who's District 6 representative, is that the grant funding from District 6 is still available, but has not yet been submitted to us. Yova said the funding for the project is definite, however, the release is not, may not be in time for a fall pave. So, to me, it looks like it's gonna be more of a spring paving project, so I would anticipate. Then I'm probably releasing the money in March, which means we could probably get it done in May. I think the engineering is done, everything's done, it's on the shelf, it's just waiting for the, the states match. So, I'm hopeful we get that going as soon as possible when we do get the money. Most Rita, most recent Rita teleconference was held, and we continue our conversion work for allowing the regional income tax authority to take over. Mabel has done a very good job, so I do wanna give her kudos for opening the transition work. I completed the first trash, first draft of the trash aggregation bid specifications that was forwarded to council for the review. Most of it's done, there's some legal adjustments that I would recommend maybe solicitor making on contract, otherwise it's, and of course, you know, whatever actually bid specification dates are for bidding and so forth, but it's ready to go, and so I look forward for those meetings. I attended the merchants' meeting at the Sebring Mansion, as Councilman Phillips, Counselwoman Phillips mentioned, Tom Pukas is a member, is from AADF. The main focus of conversation was moving forward with the strategy on the Royal China property, and the consensus, the consensus was to bring a consultant onboard to exclusively handle and expedite the project. They also discussed joining an existing community improvement development organization, excuse me, that's the GADC, instead of resurrecting the Sebring Community Improvement Corporation, which is still on the books but not activated, so, Counselwoman Phillips and I were talking about that earlier today. We left it on the books, so it can be reactivated at any time. There was a required, as you know from previous reports, there was a FEMA hazard mitigation grant I was working on, and I still am. There was a required webinar, however, it was canceled because of the FEMA's response to Hurricane Harvey and now Hurricane Irma. We're gonna go ahead and proceed with the grant package, however, it may, the monies may not be available until 2018 because of the funding crunch, so that's in motion. It's for about $150,000, just to refresh your memory, and that's for new generator, control panel, and rewiring of the system to work. My office received two enforcement letters from John Shoney from Skender, Mahone County Health, that's on properties 104 East Kentucky and 690 West Ohio, letters forwarded to council members for review. Elizabeth Petrie from Mahone County Auditor's Office confirmed receipt of council resolutions for tax relief certification, should be wanting to be passed on, and should appreciate council's quick response. Last week, I received a five-page copy from Mahone EPA to our engineers, outlined numerous additional adjustments and requirements, to our recently approved corrosion control study. Essentially, they want us to increase the scope of the data collecting, reporting documentation, and testing and monitoring, so our engineers are looking at translating exactly what they want. I do anticipate some increased costs, just as a follow-up, awaiting for our quick solve engineering to provide immediate technical specifications, so with the letter, we'll go out to EPA so we can waive orders for 7, eventually make $5,000 a month of testing fees. Fortunately, it looks like they're gonna add the testing, and they're gonna get back to where it works, so, anyway, it's, it's a motion, and we're up to speed. The municipality received franchise fees from Charley Communication, that's the Tom Warner, amount we received was $10,239.61, that covers the time period of the beginning in June on our franchise fees. R.G. Anderson reported that our old ambulance, number two, was picked up from Station One, Startron Auto Sales paid the village $15,000 for, and they're donating it to the Alliance Fire Department. The chief also in the report, the council will look at it, and several other things, we already P36 changes he was making. Also received a, another notification from Chris Maslow at EPA regarding his recent site inspection of the water treatment plant, the notice indicated that we are fully compliant, no violations. The letter outlines several pages of new requirements and recommendations, and these are in addition to the corrosion control study recommendations. That was also forwarded to council last week, knowing engineers and staff working on this. 2018 budget packets all went on to department heads this, this past week, the next four weeks, we'll be working on constructing 2018 budget. I'm also working on transfer appropriation package for council review for third quarter reconciliation, which should be available to finance committee hopefully next week, so is that time of year to go working on finances. Superintendent Hatten at the wastewater treatment plant, in my report, there's several things that they were working on at the plant, updates, including the $14,000 clarifier wall repair that's been worked on too, that's in motion, that they're gonna be, they're actually starting this week, so that should be better than I'm looking to. Governor had ordered the lowering of flags for Mahone County and at the Ohio State House September 9th, as an honor of the life and service of the former state, state senate president, Harry Messel. I was also recently advised by Reifer Smith from Mahone County Land Bank, then 496 West Maryland, was sold by the owners, and taxes were paid to my transfer, and therefore the land bank can no longer pursue this as a property, demolition. Therefore, if council has any additional property to see online, please let me know. I think there's two new vacancies on our list, so we're down to 11, so I need two properties to add into the backswing. Sebring Business Association is meeting tomorrow, September 12th, 8:00 a.m. in Alcedor, for anyone interested in attending, discussing several items, including the upcoming fall on September 1st, September 16th. President ordered the flags at Mass today for September 11th, marking the 16th anniversary of 9/11 terrorist attacks, Pentagon, and United Airlines Flight 93, so it is Patriot Day today. Civil Service Commission completed the testing and the scoring for recent entry of police and patrolmen and dispatcher exams, Counselwoman Flowers has gone over that. And an update on the Churkengust Park mural, it will start being renovated this Friday, weather permitting, and should be done by Sunday. That includes my report.
Any questions for the manager? Mr. Harp?
Yes, Rick, on the paving for 12th Street?
Yes.
Is that, that was awarded to Central Allied?
We were not part of that process, I'm not, I'm not quite sure we're company. The way that started out, it was a federal project that we received monies in 2015.
Right.
During the engineering phase in 2016, when it was being designed, and then we were working with the state and the county to extend it beyond our limits, in, in order to get the most bang for our buck, so to speak, we allowed ODOT to do the engineering and the bidding, so they did the bidding process.
Yeah.
So, we were out of that part, so.
It was, I think it was Central Allied, I'm pretty sure in the packet that we got, it's Central Allied. Yes.
It's here.
Then yes, it's Central Allied.
Normally, we use North Star. Well, whoever comes in with the best price.
Yeah, I mean, ODOT submitted the bids, and they did the award, so.
Yeah, that's fine. As long as we can beat the weather.
All right, let's see, they're starting three weeks.
I wonder what it's gonna be on October 4th?
October 4th is when they start.
That's a couple weeks away.
I got married mid-October, it was 80 degrees that day.
Stay nice and warm.
Never know.
So, it can conceal before the salt goes on.
A report of other village officials. Bill, you have anything for us tonight?
Just to let everyone know, we did rent a grader, we're working on alleys now, hoping that they'll stay secure for the winter.
That's it. Got the alley off of 15th between Texas and Carolina, have you been up that one yet?
No. No, I'm just starting today.
You're just starting, okay. Put that one on your list, at least take a look at, I guess. Couple residents up there, been complaining, so. Chief, you got anything?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Ordinance of resolutions, there are no new business tonight, so we're back to citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens that would like to comment?
I have a question. What was the address on Kentucky Avenue?
104 East Kentucky.
Thank you. And on the consultant for Royal Properties, who's hiring him or her, and who's paying?
That has not been decided yet. I think what needs to happen is, well, my recommendation, we have a workshop with the Merchants Association, the GADC president and council, to kind of go over our options on how to approach that and how to fund that, so it hasn't been decided yet.
Dave?
Yes, sir.
Does anybody recall what happened the last time we attempted to get that grant, and it fell through?
Yeah.
It was because the owner couldn't come up with $250,000, and we lost the million-dollar grant.
Yep.
And, you know, I don't want to see us using public money for private property.
Not $250,000?
No.
The taxpayers' money.
And that's the problem, we can't ever get a hold of the owner of the property.
Wow, and I thought this, I thought the Attorney General's office was handling that, I mean, I thought they were, but of course, I'm sure they have a lot bigger fish to fry than just that one gentleman.
Well, they did, they did have a court finding against him, did adjudicate against him, and they did issue fines, and from what I understand, the fines continue to generate on a daily basis. The problem is, in the state or any public entity can seize the property once the, once the fines exceed the fair market value of that property.
By owner domain?
No, just by virtue of, yeah, it's just, if your fines exceed the fair market value of your property, the property no longer has an interest, and the only way to, for the state to compensate itself is to take the property. However, because it's a brownfield, requiring probably about a million and a half right now, brownfield cleanup, the state's not going to want to seize that probably, because then they would inherit a million and a half dollar liability. So that's one of the things that needs to be explored, how to convince the current owner to essentially walk away from the interest in the property so that something can be done with the property by another entity, whether it's public or private, so that's the trick right now. It's kind of a catch-22, you can't go for the brownfield grant without having some sort of owner to work with, and...
But all the scopes of everything, I have that, of what they propose to do.
We did discuss that in that meeting, yeah.
All those boxes, all those boxes, banger boxes, full of documentation when it was done before my time was on the basement, we started all that. Of course, it's all going to have to be updated, but...
Sure.
Have the fines exceeded the value of the property?
That I don't know. That would be a question for the Attorney General to answer, we can inquire and ask.
I think you should. It's been what, eight years?
At least.
Since the Attorney General?
Since the fire.
Oh, since the fire, yeah, it's only been two years since they adjudicated against it, so.
Yeah, it's probably been close to eight years.
Only two years, but two years is a long time to look at that.
Any other citizens' comments? Mr. Moore?
Yeah, you just noticed I made, I lax in coming down and thanking you all for serving for our dinner, but as you can tell, by the time we cleaned up and I get out of there, it's usually late. Tonight, just to let you know, we served 185 meals tonight, so, I thank you.
So you're not back on your regular schedule at the school?
We are.
You're back at BL?
And tonight it was served by a brand-new host out of Alliance Sun Ministries, and you missed a great homemade meatloaf meal with homemade cake, and sorry you missed it, too bad.
Carryout was good.
Carryout, we had, yeah, 55 carryouts, so.
Well, delivery.
It is something that, not to my own horn, or my committee's own horn that put this on, but it is something that is needed in this community, I think. We started ninth year in November, in case I don't make it back.
Good. Counsel, under other business, just so there's no cross-board talk, I have invited the manager and Chief Harris to lunch on Wednesday, we will go somewhere in town here, after that we will visit a couple businesses, and I would like to see us do that every month, and hopefully we could, I could take a council member, another council member with me. You know, I'm not here enough during the day to know what's going on, I mean, some are, but I'm not, so my plan is to rotate the department heads. Chief Harris was nice enough to be the first sacrificial lamb to the slaughterhouse, so that's what my plan is, is every month I'm going to slay today, and council will be notified prior to that. Again, we, I can only take one council member with me, so that we don't get into a sunshine violation, but we will be meeting with our downtown businesses, and hopefully some patrons there to kind of see what the issues are, and hopefully we can start to address some of those. My ultimate goal is to get the manager out of his office and out in the public, I know he's a little gun-shy, but I'm going to, I'm going to work with him on that, and that's what my goal is, and I see us expanding that out into our business out on...
The industrial park?
The industrial park, yes, I see us expanding that, I mean, we'll probably have to set those up ahead of time, but hopefully we'll see how the first one goes Wednesday. My plan is to do it this Wednesday, and this is something I've been wanting to do for a while, but just haven't had a chance to do it, so I picked Wednesday, and I'm going to, I'm going to go for it, so I'll report back to council how it goes, but I just didn't want anybody thinking I was basically shortcutting the executive branch. I don't get back here enough during the day to know what the businesses are actually doing, what their complaints are, so my boss has been so gracious to give me the afternoon off, so that'll be this Wednesday, we'll meet here at Village Hall 12, and then head somewhere wherever these gentlemen decide they want to eat. There will be no tax dollar money expended, it will come out of my pocket, so the taxpayer's not going to pay for it, I'll pay for it out of my gracious salary that they provide me every month, so.
Want to go look at our residential drainage problem with me a little earlier, with the engineers?
I can't get back probably any sooner than about 11:30, but actually, yeah, I wouldn't mind going and doing that, for sure. So if there's no other business to be brought before us tonight, it's 7:35, and motion to adjourn would be in order, so move.
Second.
Motion by Flowers, seconded by Hark. Questions or comments? Clerk call a roll?
Flowers?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Hark?
Aye.
This council is adjourned. Thank you, folks.